When observing our meetings, members of the public are expected to act responsibly with decorum and respect. Bluewater District School Board meetings are held in public, but they are not public meetings. They are business meetings conducted from the public venue if they wish to do so. Racist, discriminatory, unwell-to-met, disruptive comments and/or questions are not acceptable at any time, including before, during, and after our meetings as people are leaving. Those who do not follow these rules will be asked to leave. We appreciate that most of our attendees continue to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. However, not all have been as willing, unfortunately. For this reason, staff and students will not be engaging with certain members of the public who are attending our meetings. Thank you to everyone for your support in unfolding a safe and respectful place for all. So now we're going to be our acknowledgement. With acknowledgement, we acknowledge that we're meeting on the traditional land of the Sauk Gee, Gee Way Nation, which is represented by the community through Sauk Gee First Nation in Chinatown, name-washed, unseen First Nation. We also think of the Canadian nation of Ontario, whose history and people are well represented in boroughs and great counties. And as I said, we received regrets from Trustee Maung, Heidi Hogan, and Richie, sorry. I'd also like to know that any members of the 2024-2025 Student Senate who were not sworn in at the September regular meeting of the board will be sworn in at the next regular meeting of the board in which they are intended. So that's not tonight. And so that just let know that Student Senator Hale and Holt still need to be sworn in at the next regular meeting of the board that they are attending. So now I'm looking for the approval that the agenda for the committee of the whole board meeting for October 1st, 2024 be approved as printed. And I have a mover. Thank you, Trustee. Been doing my person. Oh, I'm well covered. I'm well covered. So at this point, is there any new business that you need to add to the agenda? Okay, I see none. All in favor. And that is carried. Is there any disclosure of cuneor or interest of any of the items that are printed before you? And I see none. Thank you. There are no delegations this evening. So now we are at reports with recommendations. I'm going to be inviting Superintendent Lefay, who will speak to the report and recommendations. So this is the recommendation that the Bluewater District School Board consider for approval that Georgian Bay Music School students participate in the GBCS New York City Music Trip 2025, May 14th to May 18th, 2025, contingent that it aligns with all travel advisories at the time of the trip. Can I have a mover for that, please? Thanks. Trustee Morgan got you. And welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm going to ask Senator Kurt to speak to the report. I know you have the full package in front of you. But she has a few other things to say to add to the report. So Senator Kurt.
Yeah. The Georgian Bay Community School Music Program is excited to launch its annual music trip tradition once again. New York City is our destination, and it will be the fourth time that our school has performed in this city under the direction of a music teacher, Mr. Patrick Delance. Music trips are as much a part of the GBCS music program as the melodies that our instruments produce. Dating back to the 1970s, 80s, and 90s, GBCS has proudly performed in countless cities and communities across Canada and around the world. Previous trips have included Dallas, North Carolina, Boston, Washington, Chicago, Philadelphia, Montreal, Quebec City, Glasgow, Edinburgh, Orlando, and Cleveland. Over the years, these trips have involved countless GB students, and for many of them, these trips have been a proud and special highlight for their high school years. Bluewater Director Lori Wilder even participated in the GBSS 2004 trip to Washington, DC.
And it was a lot of fun. Thanks for the good memories and reminder.
GBCS has been grateful that the Bluewater District School Board has supported our program, and these amazing experiences for our students are of interest. Props, one of, sorry. Props, one of the most, one component of the annual music trip that our school is most proud of is our No Musician Left Behind policy with regards to trip costs and trip payments. Looking back over Mr. Delaney's time at Georgian Bay, the GB Music Program has been able to assist hundreds of families through its GB Music Financial Assistance Program. Most recently, our 2023 trip to Orlando saw nine GB families helping them receive financial assistance from our program. These include students who might have never had the chance to travel to this incredible destination. Their families have expressed their sincere gratitude for the opportunity that GBCS has helped to provide for their travel. GB Music has tried tremendous support from the major donor communities, and with that, our main source of revenue comes from our annual concerts, coffee houses, fudge fundraiser, and donations. The phrase "no musician left behind" is not just a motto of its mission state. New York City will provide, will offer our students a world-class musical opportunity. This city has earned its place in the industry as one of the top music and performance destinations around the globe. And a trip to this city and its drawway productions will inspire and make a life-changing impression on the students in our program. The students can look forward to an action-packed itinerary that provides opportunities to learn from and work with musical clinicians and experts in their field and enjoy the iconic sights and sounds of this incredible city. This international trip will allow our students to return to our community with a greater sense of the world around them and a new understanding of foreign cities, foreign cultures, and foreign music. If you have any further questions about this proposal, please do not hesitate to reach out to Mr. Delaney. He would be very excited to answer your questions. As students who've participated in the GBCS music program, I have seen and experienced the school-wide benefits that a culminating international trip provides. I sincerely appreciate the support of the Bluewater District School Board has provided to our school and its music program over the years. These trips provided the unique experiences that shape and build us as students and encourage us to open our eyes and ears and to broaden our minds and possibilities that lie beyond our school's community importance. Thank you.
Oh, very good. Okay, is there any questions or comments concerning this trip? I'm going to go to Trustee Morgan online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As usual, I do find the cost of this trip beyond some people's reach. It's $2,000. There are some families in our community that cannot afford that money. We, I went online and checked the musical theater that was being shown in Toronto at this time, and we have the likes of Moulin Rouge, The Life of Pi, and stuff that's just come off Broadway and stuff that's just going on to Broadway. I realize that there will not be an opportunity for them to walk down some of the streets and into Times Square. But there are many kids in the neighborhood who have not even been to Toronto, and there's lots to see there. I understand that they were going to be hosted by one of the great music schools, which is Juilliard. But Toronto has a great school, too. They also open the doors of the opera and musical theater for our students to see if it's researched. Just saying, I will support the trip, but I wish there was more resources, a research, and consideration of things locally within two days that we could supply to our kids. There's also Stratford, which I haven't even looked at this year. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. And Trustee Lutz? Oh, right ahead.
Thank you. So you have some same questions, Trustee Morgan, that I had as well, for the organizer of the trip as well as the principal. We talked at length about trips like these and possibly offering a Toronto-based trip that would look very similar. It has been tried in the past in Georgian Bay. There was an extremely low request and turnout by the students. It actually had been, I think, canceled at that time because they did not have enough students who wanted to go to Toronto. I also made a point of calling the travel agency that actually booked this one. Actually, no, it was a different travel agency that is a board vendor, and I asked them to price out a similar type of trip to Toronto for me. And it was actually, believe it or not, it was actually coming up to be not that far off of this trip. It was going to be in the range of $1,500 to $1,600. Toronto was very expensive. It is becoming a very expensive city of visits. I do appreciate, and I did ask about Metropolitan University, U of T, those music programs. I know they're high quality and the possibility of doing that. He said that he could put a package together, but again, he said it would be close to about $1,600. Bussing is just very expensive now where, when you're going to Toronto or you're going all the way to New York. And don't ask me why. It's not my area of expertise. But I did ask some of those questions. I just wanted to be sure. I shared that with you, and we did have a lengthy talk with the school about that.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I'm Trustee Lutz. Yes, two, thank you. Thank you to our student senators for doing the fantastic report and for sharing about the No Musician Left Behind program, like really sharing about that. And quick question for you. Will you be going on this trip?
Hopefully, yes.
And then a second thank you for about the package we received. I appreciated how clearly everything was laid out about helping families with with documentation and a better meals provided and all the things we're often asking about being included. But I appreciated how clear it was laid out. So thank you.
Trustee Thompson?
Just comment. Your presentation was excellent. It was so thorough. And I really appreciated the information you just provided to us, Keith. It really rounds out. I think that reflects a lot of the questions that you've heard from trustees over many trips. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the response that you have provided. And certainly, I agree with Trustee Lutz about the No Musician Left Behind. A really important feature when we know that the cost is high and maybe not something everyone is able to afford for a person. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I don't see any, but you did a great presentation, and I'm sure you made your mom proud. Okay, I'm going to put it back. The Bluewater District School Board consider for approval that Georgian Bay Community School students participate in the GBCS New York City Music Trip 2025, May 14th to May 18th, 2025, contingent that it aligns with all travel advisories at the time of the trip. It was moved by Trustee Morgan. All in favor. That's carried. Okay, now we're down to committee reports. I'm going to need, and this would be a report for information. So I'd like to invite Special Education Advisory Committee Chair Atkinson to speak to the report.
So our Special Education Advisory Committee met here on Monday, September 23rd. And we received a presentation from Team Coordinator and Behavioral Expertise Professional Deborah McCollough on one step, well, one step in after-school and summer skill development partnership program. And this is for our students that have a week maybe during pottery, or horseback riding, or just special activities. And I want to say that they've increased, I believe it's 11 partners. 11, yes, this year. So there's more and more partnerships throughout the district to make it equitable for our students. And it's a well-received program. The feedback from the parents and the students themselves was very positive. We had also received an update from the financial analyst, Melissa Crumler, on the Special Education budget. And she explained to the committee on the envelopes and pockets of money and what it comes from, from what. And we missed you, Andrew, at the meeting. Andrew's been with us since Seattle for a very long time, but now he's got a new role, so Melissa did well. And she will come back and report when all the numbers are crunched. And we thanked her for that. Now, we also received a report from, it was actually an update from Learning Service Administrator Colleen McGuire on the Special Education Advisory Presentation Format for the 2024-2025 school year. And we're just going to change it up a little bit. Instead of having a presentation from all the departments in Learning Services, we're going to zoom in on two per month and then ask for if there's additional information they needed. We will then ask for it, but we're going to give it a try and see how it goes. And I'll keep you posted. So the Canadian members also provided an ongoing work of their upcoming events with their agencies. And it's one sad thing, this with the Canadian Mental Health Association. They are, the budget got crunched, and they're going to be more focusing on the adult awareness versus the child awareness. So Keystone Holden, where CMHA is leaning off. So their youth awareness programming is reduced for 2024 or 2025. Now, there are 11 scripts of pre-recorded videos with the puppets. There is seven Great Sacred Grandfather teachings available. So that's for you, Keith, there on the website. And I looked tonight, and I couldn't find it, but she said the end of September. But I can keep you posted on when they will be. And so then our teachers can, we're just going to have to go with the volume that they can use it in their curriculum, but they'll be there on the website free for us to use. FASD, of course, September 9th was FASD Day. And they continued on with wearing red for the month of September because we're just getting back into school, and it seems to always fall right in the beginning, and our student senate and senators aren't able to promote it like FASD wishes to. Oh, so FASD is Field Alcohol Syndrome Disorder. So, yes, thank you for that, Chair. And also, Great Bruce Family and Services had a compliment over the summer. She, Alicia Rosenberg, who worked over the summer with some of her people, and she needed some information from, at a board level. And she was able to look on the website and find what she needed and proceed with what she needed to do. So she come, she said to say thank you to all involved at making the website user-friendly. And so I passed on the kudos to her, and so I can remember, let's call it time, it wasn't so friendly, but she was able to use it and was very thankful for that. But maybe also, if you remember last year, Bonnie Von Bedley, our student senator from Georgian Bay. She, we made her become a member of CAC. She was really induced when she went off to university. She didn't want to leave us. We're a wonderful committee. But anyway, she, you'll be seeing that come up at board for approval at the next meeting. And she will be joining us on teams. So I look forward to when he's in. But that is my report. Any questions? I will be happy to answer them if I can.
The mental health report. I'm just wondering if Jackie Ralph will still be providing us support or?
Her support will be minimal. And we're not sure whether she will be able to, her agency will let her stay on CAC. But we're just going to, as I said earlier, go with the flow and expect the best. But it will be minimal during, and she's not allowed to have co-op students anymore. Students will not be able to co-op with Jackie. So, yeah, it was sad to hear.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. Thank you very much for your report, Trustee Atkinson. Okay, we're now, we have moved to the Policy Standing Committee. Their meeting was on September 17, 2024. Trustee Lutz, there are some motions, but you might want to get the report. And then once your report is done, then I will put the motions on the floor. Okay?
That was good. Sorry, I have some microphone problems. So Policy Standing Committee met on Tuesday, September 17th at 4:45 PM. We went over kind of standard September findings of the schedule of meetings, the schedule of policy cycle, global review for this year. And then we went over things, a lot of which had to do with legislative change from the British government over the summer. So the code of conduct, the bylaws, electronic meetings, and the technology use. Most of the changes done that were discussed were based off of the legislative direction from the Congress. So, yeah, that's good.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now I'm going to put the first recommendation on the floor that the Bluewater District School Board consider approving. Board policy BP 1108-d, code of conduct, trustee as revised for system use. Mover, trustee home. Discussion, questions, comments? Okay, I see that. All in favor? And that is carried. Next, that the Bluewater District School Board consider approving the following sections of the Bluewater District School Board procedural bylaws as revised per system use. One, section 111, two, section 234, section 3, no, three, section 2310, and four, section 2312, and V, section 3151. Can I have a mover for that, please? Thank you, Trustee Lutz. Comments, questions? So this, I don't see any, but this affects our bylaws. So because it will be, it has to do with changing bylaws that when it comes before the board in two weeks, it will require two-thirds of a majority. It has a higher reading than just 50%. So just to let you know that. Anyway, if there's no more comments, then I'm calling the recommendations. So all in favor? And that is carried. So there is a link here. So like, even though we're going through it quite quickly, if you attended the policy meeting, it's in a, you know, policy document, then you can actually see what we're referring to. Next, that the Bluewater District School Board consider approving board policy BP 1402-d, electronic meetings boarding committee as revised for system use. Can I have a mover for that? Thank you, Trustee Lutz. Comments, questions, or discussion from the meeting? Okay, I see that. All in favor? And that is carried. And that's the end? I think, yeah. That was, that went pretty quick. Okay, is there any new notices of motion coming forward tonight? I see none. Now we're at reports for information. And so first off, I'd like to invite, this is just for information. I'd like to invite Superintendent Education, Wow, Wowards, to speak to the reports. It is on multilingual language learners, of course, and welcome.
Anything? Sorry, we're just adjusting to some technical issues, but I think we're good now. I'd like to introduce Standard Reed. Standard Reed is our multilingual learner, the board teacher. I'm going to keep all those words together. But she plays the teaching role to support the support we provide for our multilingual language learners through the Bluewater District School Board. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to take a few minutes of your time to share about a group of students that I'm very passionate about. And just share some things that we're doing with our students who come from other countries, speak other languages. See if our technology's going to cooperate today. So we look at, how do we determine if a student is a multilingual language learner? So we really rely on the information that parents gave us on the registration form. And we have two language categories. So we have languages spoken at home and languages spoken most often. And so if they indicate that either of those is not English, then we consider them to be a multilingual language learner. And we do have some students and families that come to us speaking three, four languages. And then we add English to that, and we add French to that. So they really do bring a lot to our schools, not just the language, but also the cultural backgrounds that are different to. I may forget some data from last year. I haven't had time to look at this year's data. But last year, we had just under 1,200 multilingual language learners. And in elementary, we had 24 different languages spoken. And in secondary, we had 39. And I'll just show you a little bit of data that will explain why that's a little bit different, why there's so many more languages down in secondary, even though in secondary, we have far less multilingual language learners, just more so proportionally. I'm sorry, I don't know how well you can see this. But the big thing to notice is that German, Low German in particular, is the language that is spoken most often. Because in elementary, half of our multilingual language learners are from our midnight communities. So Low German, Pennsylvania Dutch, those are the languages that they speak. So that's why that makes a huge proportion of our multilingual language learners. So we also have other languages. So we have Arabic, as I mentioned, Pennsylvania Dutch, Gujarati, lots of different languages that really make our board very diverse. And these students obviously bring a lot to our elementary schools, our elementary classrooms, hallways. So then, one of the things that changed with secondaries, often our midnight communities do not continue into secondary. That's a cultural thing that they leave school during their grade eight year. So that's where in secondary, we get a lot of different languages. We have students who come from a variety of different countries. But you can see from this, or in this picture, that Arabic, Khutcha, Urdu, Spanish, those are kind of the more Vegas languages. Shouldn't say Vegas, but more common languages that are spoken in secondary. So that's why there's just a bit of a difference. Okay. And then looking at. Okay, and then looking at, um. Why these students are designated differently, uh, we're not necessarily looking at labels. Uh, but our M L L designation is important for funding and for programming purposes. We do have to deal with data. Um, so that's important. Uh, the ultimate goal for M L L students is for them to feel comfortable and part of the community, just like any other student on our board. We really want to welcome them and have them be, uh, feeling really comfortable at school. I actually sat in on five different family interviews today in Bee Bird. We have some families coming from different countries. And all of them were so happy to be in the community, to be welcomed into our board and different classrooms. So it was really nice to have these families after such a huge transition, really do feel welcome here. And it's not just in Bee Bird, any of the schools that I go into, I often get the same feedback, how welcome they feel here. So we're obviously doing great things at our schools, uh, to make them feel welcome. We want to continue doing that. Okay, so then we're looking at how we support these students. Uh, so in our elementary schools, um. We have elementary teachers in twenty of those schools. So they are not working full-time. It depends on the number of M L L students that they have. Uh, and we focus on lower step levels. Now, step is, uh, steps toward English proficiency. So we're looking at, uh, those lower step levels basically means they have, uh, limited English, and we want a really helpful acquired hub. But again, that's why we make them feel more comfortable. It's going to allow them to communicate effectively. And be able to be more proficient in another language. Uh, so we have training sessions with our elementary M L L teachers four to five times a year. Uh, secondary, uh, we've been trying some different things. We actually have an online E S L session. Um, it is synchronous, so they log in and they have a teacher on the screen. Which I know seems a little strange when we think about the needs of students who are trying to learn English in another language. But the problem at our board is that we are so geographically diverse, uh, or vast, so spread out. And so we have only a few students in each of our secondary schools that actually need this course. So being able to put a teacher in each of those schools would be very costly. So it's a more. Uh, cost efficient option for us to be able to do it online. We actually found, though, that we have so many students are rolling class, like we have seventeen. And seven of them ended up being at Great Highlands. So we've actually been able to just get approval that we can actually put an in-person section at Great Highlands. So that those seven students now get that ideal learning environment in person, where they can talk to each other, they have a teacher in front of them, so. So I'm really excited about that, that we're meeting one of those secondary needs. And we're doing it in the best ways that we can with the funds that we have. Um, yeah, so and obviously there's ongoing support in person. Uh, through teams via email for myself and Martha McCleary, who also does multilingual support in our board. Uh, we have a multilingual learner sharepoint site. And so that's really mostly for our elementary M L L teachers that there's a lot of information that we have that they can access as well. So they can find that in my location. Um, technology has come a long way, and so it's really beneficial for our M L L student. So we have iPads and really good quality headphones. That we use especially for students who are fairly new, may have limited English. And so we have about a hundred and fifty iPads that we're using. And that may seem low when you look at the number of multilingual learners we have. But again, we're trying to provide the support while they're building that English proficiency. So while they need a lot of translation tools and some other software programs that we have, like Lexia English. Which, if you've heard of, uh, Lexia Core Five. It's a reading program that we use. So Lexia English focuses more on the oral. And if you've ever seen things like Duolingo, Rosetta Stone. It's a program that's very similar to that, but Lexia English really has the cute avatars. Um, sort of the animated features that younger kids really like, so it gives them a good opportunity to practice their oral English skills. Um, yeah, and we're trialing twenty-five of the Core Five licenses because we're starting to see that as our M L L students. Uh, progress through progress like Lexia English. Then we're looking for some reading support for them. And some of them really thrive in, uh, using different technology apps and programs. So we're just trying to try a lot and see how that goes this year with some of our students who are ready for that. Uh, but again, Rosetta Stone, we have thirty-five licenses for the board. And we use those more for older students because it focuses more on real-life images, photographs. Or a similar concept to Lexia English. So it kind of means that these are older students. Who don't necessarily want those cartoon animations. It's just apparently not cool anymore. Uh, so yes, we have a lot of different technology features. I could spend all day thinking about U S technology and translation features that we use, but. Uh, our iPads are kind of the big one that really helps us. Uh, get kids acclimated and feeling comfortable and being able to communicate. Because it is a safety issue. If kids come not being able to speak English and not being able to communicate with us. We do really want to have those immediate, um, opportunities for them to communicate. Okay, and Identity Text is another great project that we've been working on in elementary. And so we've worked, uh, with Apple and using our iPods. Uh, to come up with ways that we can have kids sharing their stories, sharing more of who they are, what makes them unique. We know a lot of these kids are coming with very different experiences than some of our students who are Canadian born. And so we want these kids to be able to share those. And have it not be weird or different, but having them be celebrated, right? So that they get a voice, they get to express who they are, and what's really important. So we also work with an organization last year called Living Python, and we're continuing that partnership. And Living Python is an organization from Toronto that's really great. Uh, they were really great at helping us dig below the surface. So not just finding out. You know, what kids' favorite colors or their favorite foods were, but really getting them to think about where do they come from? What does that look like? What does that sound like? And helping us navigate through, sort of cautiously asking those questions. Because some of our students are coming from very difficult circumstances that have led them here. And so we wanted to just make sure that we were treading lightly, but still honoring and celebrating. Um, a lot of these individuals that really have great experiences to share that we can all learn from. Uh, so one of the quotes from a workshop that we had with Living Python. Was to hear each other, the sound of different voices, to listen to one another is an exercise of recognition. It also ensures that no student remains invisible in the classroom. And that's really important. That's another thing that we're trying to do. And especially in secondary, a lot of our students, the typical of the age group, even Canadian or English-speaking students. Often want to be invisible. They may not talk a lot during the day. But we really want these students to be able to share their stories and be able to communicate. So it's really important that they're not being invisible or. Thinking that they're not smart because they can't speak English, right? We want to really just value what they have and who they are. Uh, so that's an example of one of our identity texts, and I hope that this technology is going to work for our students soon, I know. Uh, so this was a student who I think was from high school last year. And we'll just give this a break. All right, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not, it's, 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 it, 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 it. I don't know if you're gonna hear that very well. Um, but a lot of our identity texts, we're trying to have kids speak in their own, in a language that they're most comfortable in. And really celebrating those languages. We always, I always tell families when I meet with them, that we don't want them to lose the language and the culture that they had, that they have, like, that's part of who they are. We want them to share that, we want to celebrate that. And we don't want, uh, kids or families to lose their language. We just want to add English. Um, so that they are able to communicate, um, and learn another language. We don't want them to lose anything that they already have. It's a big part of who they are. Okay, and I was privileged to be part of an event last week in Almsdale to the Bay Shore Community Center. Uh, there was a diversity and belonging conference. And, uh, Bluewater District School Board was one of the, uh, sponsors or hosts, uh, for the organizing committee. And, uh, some of you were there. Which was amazing. And so it was a great day to build a lot of events. And I was able to do a presentation, a workshop essentially, kind of showing what we can do on the iPods and some of the translation tools. Uh, we had a lot of people from our community, so being able to also showcase how those translation tools can be used in. The workforce and out in the community, or if you were traveling, which allows us then to be more inclusive. And I was also very fortunate, two students from Great Highlands came and joined us. Who are fantastic. I wish I could have recorded, uh, their speech. They, one of the students, uh, Priya, came to Canada in December of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, so she came from Sri Lanka, and Tamil is her first language. She met another student at Great Highlands. Who is Canadian-born, but her family speaks Tamil, and they immediately became very good friends. So Priya started with very limited English. And at such a big event with a large audience, I think there were probably a hundred and thirty people, uh, in attendance. It was a sold-out event. And she was able to write a speech in English and presented to such a large group, having only been in Canada for a year and a half. So it was very, it was an emotional experience. It was a wonderful experience for them both to share about that friendship I would develop. And just how that common language really helped them, uh, really develop a bond and a friendship. And so made Priya really feel part of, uh, part of the school community. And part of the community outside of school as well. They see each other often outside of school, so. So yeah, so that was an amazing event, uh, to be part of. I hope it becomes an annual event because there were a lot of other things going on than just this part of it. Uh, one of the things that I'm excited about for this year. Is that we're planning an M L L symposium at the end of November. So it's going to take place here on November twenty-seventh. And we're focusing on a really amazing inspiration text called Pestling It In. And Pestling It In is a compilation of stories of newcomers to Gray and Bruce Counties. And it was actually put together by two students who were at St. Mary's at the time. They've since gone to, uh, secondary school this year. Uh, but they've gathered these wonderful stories of people who have come to Gray and Bruce Counties. Most of them are adults, which is fantastic. But my goal is I'd love to see us create a Bluewater, uh, version of the book. Where we celebrate the stories of our multilingual learners, uh, within Bluewater. So we're targeting students in grades seven to twelve. Uh, we've done a lot with our elementary students in terms of identity texts. There are symposias, we'll target educators and students in grades seven to twelve. Uh, hopefully we can share their stories, but also letting them look at those stories of local immigrants and newcomer families. Uh, to create some awareness, to create some discussion about some of their successes and how they were successful. So there's a lot of opportunities for us to use this book to learn. Um, it also focuses on, some of the stories are based on, uh, community members that run some wonderful community organizations that we work with. So gives them a chance to promote those organizations as well. Because some of the people from, who are included in the book are going to come and read their, uh, portion of the book. As part of our symposium. So they'll be able to share not only their success stories in the book. But also sharing what they do in the community and community organizations. And that kind of leads me to my last slide, which is really the community organizations, uh, that we can't. Uh, I can't do my job without them, and a lot of our educators can't. Uh, we're actively involved with settlement language services through the Y M C A. Uh, they're really great at providing translation services for us. But also, these families come from other countries to our area, and there's a lot for them to navigate. Uh, things like driver's licenses, housing, jobs. And so some of the services, the amazing, it's even over that part of it, so that families have less stress. And when the family has less stress, then our students can be more comfortable at school. Uh, Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership is also a wonderful, uh, group that we work with. Uh, they were heavily involved in the diversity conference, we bring that on. Uh, as well as all community communities of Gray Bruce are also another great, uh, organization that we work with. So that is it for me. Unless anyone has any question? Questions, comments, trustees, student trustees? Go ahead, trustee McAlpinson.
And if you, I'm, I just want to share, I sat in at that conference, and I listened to the girls. And they got up on stage, she talked for maybe five minutes. Uh, and it was remarkable to hear her story. And she, as you said, she written, she wrote it, uh, she, she spoke. And the friendship that these two girls have, have formed is, is just amazing. If I wasn't told differently, I would think that they were friends since kindergarten. Uh, the relationships, and they're keeping their culture alive, and sharing their family traditions with one another's family. It was just heartwarming. And yes, I cried, Keith.
You were the only one. There were not a lot of dry eyes in the room.
It was remarkable.
I just am curious, do you support these students from the time they first identified perhaps as a. Kindergarten student right through their schooling, or, uh, is there, how does that work? Cause I mean, I'm sure they, they're in the language before that period of time. Um, so I'm just wondering what supports going as they move through your schooling?
Yeah, so like a lot of our, like every student, why we want to meet them where they're at, we want to find out what they know. And then just probably stay on that, have a machine to their potential. So we do support from kindergarten to grade twelve. We have limited support in our kindergarten classrooms. Uh, only because the learning environment is already set up to be very visual, very oral, very social. Uh, their learning foundation will understand that skills. So it's a really great environment for them already, unless they have some specific needs that we require some additional support. Um, but so then we do focus on grades one to twelve, uh, supporting them whenever they arrive. Uh, through for as long as their needs. Sometimes their needs are just met in a regular classroom. With, uh, the appropriate adaptations. So, yeah, so it just depends what they need. Our multilingual language learners are such a diverse and varied group. And we really do look at what it is that they actually need. So when they do arrive, we do, if they are grade one to twelve, we do what's called an initial assessment. So that we do figure out what their oral reading and writing skills are like in English. Uh, we also look at their math skills too. Uh, so that we can see there's sort of where they're starting and what we need to help support them, but so that they can be most comfortable and. Uh, and just achieve to their potential.
Go ahead, trustee Lutz, and then student trustee Mal.
I'm just wondering if in a future meeting or even memo type of thing, we could maybe have some. we could maybe have some of the stories from the workshop shared about. Does that be possible?
Student trustee Paul.
Button on the side. Yeah, and then you have to hit the one on the top again.
Sorry.
Um, could you just further explain, like, um, immigrants at school, are they doing all of their, um, credits through your program? Or do they still have the opportunity to take other credits, um, within national schools, like outside of program?
So, yeah, so the program that we're offering essentially is just supporting, uh, the education that everyone else has. So they take courses based on their levels. And they may even have limited English, but still be able to do at the end level courses. That's where we use a lot of our translation tools. So, but yes, we do have a separate ESL course, which is really focusing on more, um, foundational literacy skills that they just wouldn't get from a secondary, from a high school classroom.
So would their requirements for graduation, would they remain the same, um, despite the language barrier even? I'm trying to articulate what I'm trying to say, um, like, would they remain the same despite their language?
So they still have the same requirements to graduate. However, sometimes they will come to us in grade 10 or 11, for example, and they don't necessarily have a transcript of credits from the country they come from, nor do we really know if it's really equivalent. So what we do is we will have sort of equivalency credits, um, that we will give to them. And then it's just looking at what is their goal beyond high school? What do we need to prepare them for? So they can stay in school until they're 21. Uh, we have some students who have gaps in their education. Uh, one student right now was out of school for almost four years and came to us last year in grade 11. So he wants to be an engineer, so he knows he needs to build a lot more knowledge. And so we're going to help him fill those gaps. And we found some, some creative ways to try and fill those gaps. Um, yeah, so we kind of need each student where they're at and what their goals are and desires are. Okay. Any other, one extra secret?
I have a number of questions that, uh, from the category of how the system works in practice. So let me throw the questions at you and then you can go with them. Do the 516 teachers that you mentioned work individually with students who need help with English? Is it all one-on-one? How many minutes per week do students get? Are they removed from regular classrooms to work individually? Um, and then beyond all that, how is the work integrated with classroom activities? And the work with classroom teachers, and are those classroom teachers, uh, part of the process?
Yes, um, so definitely classroom teachers are involved. Well, we have, I think you're talking about in elementary, when you have our MLL teachers, um, who may be point one or point two, like it's part of their schedule. So it depends on the needs in that school, how much time is used to support each student. So we prioritize the needs of the students and then we look at how can we best support them. So sometimes that's taking them out of the classroom and they have some small group instruction. And sometimes it's a teacher goes in and supports in the classroom. Um, sometimes we're looking at ways that we can withdraw our MLL students, but also meet the needs of smaller students at a safe time, some small group support. Um, which then means our MLL students start centering out. We're just addressing the needs, um, of those students so that they can achieve to their potential. Um, so does that answer all of your questions? Oh, I lost track.
I think it does. I just want to say, use the word creative a minute or two ago. And you might also have used the word flexible. What impresses me is that you're bold in those things. Like you're not just trying to create one system that fits all. You're working from the perspective of the students.
Yeah, well, I think that summarizes our work, right? I think educators in general, we have to be very flexible, very creative. Um, but yeah, it's with some of these students, it's sort of time sensitive sometimes. Like a student who comes to grade 11 with limited English and wants to be an engineer, we have to get really creative and be really flexible, really fast. So. And obviously, I, like I say, I don't do this on my own. There's quite a team that helps support our students, so.
Last question, if I may. Um, you did talk about resources. You said you do your best within context of your resources. Um, how adequate are those resources or, to be honest, how inadequate?
I think they're actually very adequate in the sense that, um, like things like iPads and different apps, technology tools, they can really help us empower the students because ultimately that's what we want. We want students to be able to progress in their English proficiency, progress in their academic skills, social skills. We want to build that independence. So I think we are always building capacity with our educators. And the vast part of it is being able to really build that independence in students. So they're not all, not as reliant on educators as they progress and as they've been here over time. So obviously, we would love more money and more funding, but who doesn't? But I would say we do meet their needs very, uh, very adequately. Um, yeah, I think there's a lot of ways that we can meet their needs. Uh, and some of the training that we provide to MLL teachers, uh, those training sessions help us build capacity.
So my last question that you did.
No, that was.
That was my second last question.
You said, so your last question, I heard that. Um, I just want to know if other people have some, uh, questions. Do you understand?
Sure, sure, sure.
Go right ahead, uh, student trustee White.
Just a comment. I'm really impressed by the program. I know I go to school with many of like the students who are likely in it, like the two girls you said at the conference. It's like, I see them a lot around the school seat. They're really, like, they're always together and I like to see it. It's really good. And they're always like involved with the school now too. It's great. I know in last year I had a student, Khybor, from Pakistan, who came to our class. And, um, at the start of the year, he used Google Translate and he had like limited English. But I could really see by the end of it that he had really grown when the students had like, does English have progressed then? It was really great.
Yeah, well, and that's great that you see that as a student too. So I'm happy to hear that. So I don't always get the high school student perspective. So, so it is nice to have that. Thank you. Thank you very much, um, for taking your time to, to come to the meeting. Also, the, the many questions. And Michael, if you have additional questions, maybe after you can ask that question. As much as I asked once.
Sure.
Awesome. And, uh, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Hey, we're moving on to C1B and, and once again, this information instructional leadership 2024 and 2025. And of course, um, superintendent Lowers, you speak to the report.
So tonight, are we going to be speaking about leadership?
We're beginning.
I'm not going to be speaking about leadership. I'm also going to be speaking about EQAO, the Educated and Wiling Assessments. Um, because they were released last week and so I can share them with you next month. So in the view of the research, how leadership influences student learning, Ken Leekwood and the other authors determined that leadership is second only to classroom instruction among all school-related factors that contribute to what students learn in school. School leadership can take several forms, including dealing with the daily operations of the school. Instructional leadership specifically focuses on the goal of working with educators to improve student learning. This work aligns with priority two of the multi-year strategic plan to provide quality instruction for students. Supporting this priority includes professional learning for administrators so they can better support their educators to support students. In Bluewater, we have many structures in place to support principals and vice principal learning, including monthly administrator meetings, school visits, conversations, and professional learning communities. Our principals and educators learn together. This year, we're bringing focused alignment professional learning through these structures. Through data analysis, we recognize that there are students who are achieving through current practices and there are many who are not. Looking at the 2023-24 data, let's in the development of our critical inquiry question, how can we continuously identify, plan for, and effectively respond to support the learners through whom our current practices are not working? We know that there are practices that are working for a good majority of our students. We also recognize that there are some students whose practices aren't working for it. We are strategically planning our administrator meetings, our school visits, and professional learning communities to address this question from a worldwide perspective, as well as specific to each school. Administrators and superintendents are working with vision tanks through the critical thinking consortium as a resource for this work. Developing administrators to model and foster effective instructional practices with teachers will in turn benefit our students. Answer for our question begins with analysis of data to determine which students and which practices. This recently released data from the Education Quality Accountability Office will help to inform this work also in the EQAO. The Education Quality and Accountability Office is an industry-funded agency that develops and oversees the implementation of evidence-based research and form assessment in Ontario schools. These assessments are referred to as the EQAO assessments and are intended to provide insight into student learning across the province as well as to inform improvement in student achievement outcome. A little background on the assessments, each year is a test that's adapted in reading, writing, and mathematics for students in grades three and six. Students in grade nine write a mathematics assessment and students in grade 10 write the Ontario Secondary Student Literacy Test, which is a requirement of graduation. It's also known as the OSSLT. Each student and their parents, guardians receive a personal life report of their student's achievement. Schools and school boards also receive individual student data, school data, and board data. School and board data along with the provincial data is being documented through the EQAO website. And it was being documented last year. Understanding the results, if we look at EQAO scores, they're reported as percentages of students achieving the provincial standard of level three or four. So a level three or four equates to an A or a B grade as shown on the chart. Students achieving a level two or a one will equate to a C or a D. But this is not considered a fail as a D is, as you can see on the chart, 50 to 59%. For the Ontario Secondary Student Literacy Test, students receive either a pass or a fail. So looking at our results this year, in conjunction, EQAO results are used in conjunction with other data sources to inform our next steps for professional learning with teachers and instruction for students. Bluewater District School Board results for 2023-24 have shown improvement in most areas. So the green is the areas of improvement for us. And the, uh, yellow is where it's about the same and the, um, it's actually orange or red, um, is showing a decrease. And so you can see on this chart, the how much is the board and how the province has done as well. Provincial results have decreased over the last year in every area except grade three mathematics. And as a result, the gap between our results and the province is narrowing. Looking specifically at grade three data, we are improving in all areas in grade three. It should be noted when we get this data that the ministry considers a 5%, a change of 5% to be a significant increase. We have increased by six points in grade three writing and by seven points in grade three math. Surely noted that five years of data are required to most accurately determine a trend. So we've only had the digitized version of EQAO. This is the third year, the third to the seventh results. So we might be starting to see trends, but we can't accurately consider them trends until we have about another two years of data. This year, the students who first wrote the digitized version of EQAO in grade three, in grade six, are now in grades six and nine respectively. By this time next year, the data available to us will provide even greater insights as we track the growth of these students over time. While we're being steady in grade six reading and improved slightly in grade six mathematics, our range scores have decreased. This tells us that we need to intensify the support we provide in our junior division in both literacy and mathematics. We know that students in grade six did not have the structured literacy program that we have been providing in our primary grades over the past several years. Our team is working with teachers on instructional strategies aligned with the science of reading and the science of writing, some of which was used in the younger grades in our junior grades. In grade nine mathematics, we have, uh, we've heard the Bluewater students have shown improvement in grade nine mathematics and on the, uh, the OSSLT. So this is our grade nine mathematics results the past three years. This is the OSSLT results for grade 10 literacy over the past three years. And you can see that steady improvement there. And then this is for the students who wrote it for the first time. Students have an opportunity to write it a second time. And this is the results for the students who, students who wrote the test a second time. But you can see we have made, uh, some really good strong gains in that area as well. So what does this data mean for our instructional leadership and how does it inform our next steps? All of this data indicates some continued opportunities for growth in all areas and will inform our decisions about which practices we need to affirm, adjust, adopt, or abandon.
Start with your comments.
Thank you for your report, superintendent Lowers. I just want to acknowledge what a celebration this is. You may recall being here last year at the same time and some pretty direct conversations and questions were asked about our results. This is a huge celebration. Seven of our nine categories we have improved. And where it really counts, when you think of the grade 10, um, that is the one, the OSSLT. That's a test that students have to pass, as you will know over here, to get your, uh, graduation diploma. And we exceeded the province in that. And that's what it counts. I just, huge, um, congratulations to our administrators in the room and beyond. They would know here how I've been talking about that almost every system administrator's meeting, just the focus that we need to put on our EQAO preparation, but also how that links with the curriculum. So it's not like we're doing something beyond what we're focusing on, that curriculum. Our educators through classrooms have done an exceptional job. And that's really, that connection, that engagement with their students, um, has really paid off. Our system staff here, who supported system teachers and our superintendents, um, has been phenomenal. And also trustees, when we think about our strategic plan, one of the, um, is quality instruction. So you have guided us with that multi-year strategic plan and focus. And when you think of the budget and how you've helped us, you've supported us when we needed support in terms of putting in our system teachers to support where we are. So I'm just so proud of our system, our staff, and our students. And our students have risen to that challenge too. So thank you, everybody, for just, it is a huge, huge celebration. I'm so happy that we're all in this place right here to see you. Thanks for your report.
Uh, student trustee Powell, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It is really, um,
It is really, um, exceptional to hear, as somebody who's struggled with math in the past, and, um, it's it's just, it's really great to hear that students are being better prepared, um, and it sounds like from a lot of hard work from the people in this room. Um, so it's, it's, it's really good to hear that that is paying off and that, uh, students are feeling more, um, prepared for, um, EQAO and prepared for the rest of the school, because I know it does stop in grade ten for the literacy test, but then those skills then set them up for their grade eleven, twelve years and post-secondary. So it's, yeah, really exceptional to hear.
As Trustee Thompson, and what's called a student trustee.
Uh, I think I heard you say that we've, we've seen some really positive results in our, from our grade three students and all the intensive supports that we put in. And a little less from our grade six students. And I guess the question that I'm wondering is, is that something that we as trustees should be looking at? Um, are those resources funded through the ministry to add in those additional supports for our junior students? Or is that something we should be considering when our next budget cycle rolls around that we, um, meet the needs of those students listening?
To the chair. So, some piece of this, um, just, um, in mathematics, we have a mathematics action, achievement action, achievement action plan. And it is funded for primary and junior, and after, for mathematics, especially K to twelve, but mostly for primary and junior. And we have an intensive test course in two, we have, um, three, um, primary, junior mathematics coaches who have been going into school, they're doing work in priority schools that have been identified by the ministry through previous years in EQAO. So we do have that support in mathematics. We also have some, um, you guys may see in technology, like a program called Knowledge Hook, um, that the ministry has encouraged, uh, schools to purchase. And, um, it's an excellent resource for supporting students. Um, and then we also have Math Up in our classroom community or during grade nine. So we have some good resources and some good support going in there. Um, there is for lots of work to do, and we look at our themselves compared to the province, the province also, um, has recently staying at Math is also following now in junior, and so it is certainly an area of focus for us. In literacy, the province has invested a lot of money due to the right to read into primary grades and not so much into the junior grades. But we have, um, been able through budget and funding to, uh, provide two junior literacy coaches who have been going into schools. And the challenge that they have had is the starting literacy we've been introducing in primary grades. Um, there hasn't really been anything, any resource or any, uh, any much research done on that for junior grades. Most of those kids are already past those early reading years in, in primary. And so our team has been, um, and that's, that's a problem, um, not just, um, problems wide, but it's actually like an international, everybody's talking about this. What can we do with these older students that have missed this crucial learning time in primary grades? And so our team have been finding the most current resources and, and, um, learning, getting the most current learning, and then bringing that to the teachers that they're working with in, in the junior division. And, uh, in what we call is signed the reading, which you're familiar with, you've heard us talk about that term before. And then we're focused on something called science of writing, which is recognizing the relationship between, um, writing and reading and how learning to write actually improves students' ability to learn to read as well. And now they're, they're interconnected.
You, um, I'm just wondering for that age group, the pandemic would have impacted those students also, um, going back several years. There's a few gaps for them, so they are, but.
Through the chair, so one of the things we've been doing is some screeners with, um, students in, in that age group, uh, in classes where, um, we've had, had indication that some of the students could use some additional supports. Um, and, um, trying to close some of those gaps with a program called Lassia, which is an online program that teachers use, and then they do classroom supports on in that literacy piece as well. It's connected to the Lassia, the standard mentioned, that we use, is that this is a company, same kind of format, um, the same prevention for MLS students. We have a, a four or five reading program that we use with our junior students. I see, you're right.
Well, some was frankly quite critical. We, the QAO results for the past two years, I'm not saying delighted by this significant improvement, I think. Congratulations, as to be extended to the director, obviously, top of the desk. And to the superintendents and the rest of the staff who worked so hard on it. I'm wondering. Well, two things on EQAO, first, have we learned how to prepare the schools and the teachers to implement, um, this set of questions, this, this program? And has that had something to do with the improvement in our results? Not the hard work at the instructional level, but not primary thing. I'm just wondering how, how much we have, uh, learned to work with the expectations of EQAO.
To the chair. So that's a really good question, as you recall, in my, um, presentation, I talked about focus and alignment and having alignment in the things that we do with administrators to support their teachers, to support their students. And so, um, one of the things that we have been doing is the superintendence in our school visits is asking our administrators about what their plan is for implementation of EQAO. They need to be starting that right in September, getting kids on computers, getting them logged in, getting them familiar with, um, there are EQAO provides like sample tests that, that students can do, and so getting them to, to try some of the sample tests. We also developed math check-in questions for our, um, to collect some math data that we needed, but to, um, a P two bird with one seed, as they say. Um, we created those tests so that they look like EQAO, so that when students do look at that check-in, it's very similar and the processes that they go through. For example, it, um, it's, it's almost, almost full choice, and so students are given some paper, they can work it out on the paper, and we, and we show students how to look for. It is very tricky because there are answers that are close, that you do certain things incorrectly. And, um, so we, we build those into our questions as well, but let's just the check-in questions, it's very, very similar to what they're going to see when they use EQAO.
Oh, I just.
I, I'm gonna ask other people if they have a question. Okay, any further questions or comments? No, it's it, so you can ask your last question.
Okay, well, certainly, the results for the primary grades were very impressive. Not quite so much at the, uh, junior and senior level. When do you, can we expect, uh, a significant improvement at the junior and senior level in the coming years? Uh, do you have a plan in place to pull that together?
I think, uh, I, I'm just gonna say here that that wasn't what the data actually showed, would you like to speak to that?
Oh, it's a generalization.
So through the chair, we did see improvement in our grade nine and ten, and we saw improvement in our grade three. Uh, we saw some improvements in areas of our grade six, but not in the writing. And so we saw a small improvement in grade six math, and we saw some improvement in grade six reading. I would love to say, you know, our, our aim is not to, um, meet the provincial standard, it's to exceed the provincial standard, right? And I mean, our aim should be for a hundred percent for every student. Um, we did have a couple of schools that in some areas did, some of our smaller schools where one student is a significant, um, percentage. We did have a couple of schools where there were a hundred percent in a couple of areas. Um, and so I would love to be able to, you know, we are going to endeavor and do our best to, uh, do the best for our students. And we have to remember, EQAO is a small piece of assessment, there is lots and lots of other assessment that tells features and laws about their kids and their kids' learning and informs the next steps for our teachers in the classroom. And so we, we need to remember that as well, that it's, it's just a piece of the bigger picture of what we do for kids.
Thank you, and thank you very much, and I, I want to say that, um, your very first sentence in the, in your report, I had a lot of meaning for me, and that was research indicates the impact of principle of student achievement is only second to that of the classroom teacher, and that you hear that repeatedly. And so I have huge respect for the principals and vice principals and the educators in the classroom and all those that support, you know, student success and well-being in all of our schools. Because they, they are, you know, we can do a lot of things that are around curriculum and things like that, but you can really say it's a people piece. And that's where we get the biggest fan thing for our bucket and for our students, so thank you very much. So we don't, and we didn't have, receive any new business, and we're now down to announcements, so if any trustee or student trustee have an announcement that builds with education in your school. Go ahead, trustee Ag, Agsonson.
As like you heard earlier, I did go to maybe long, diversity and belongingness conference last Wednesday. And I must say, you missed a great day, those who didn't attend. But anyway, one thing that I took, and you know how you always get that song in your head, and it was like, repeat, repeat, repeat. Well, I have some words that I wanted to share with you that have been going on in my net since last Wednesday. And they are as follows, I know what I know because I know it. And I know what I don't know because I have not yet learned it. And that was something that I took away from that conference. And making, you know, I thought I went in knowing a lot, but I learned so much more. Um, it was just a phenomenal con- conference. And, um, another thing that I took away from was, it's okay to think with your head, but we also have to lead with our hearts. And the two, with one without the other, we don't exist. And so that, that was very important to me too. And one thing that, uh, maybe we could get Adrian to, to do was, we did a, I took his workshop, and it was entitled Building a More Inclusive Community. And we played Diversity Concepts Bingo, and he gave us a bingo card with twenty-five words on it. And it was, um, it was used as an icebreaker, so we went around the room, and if I was able to explain a word, the, the person I was speaking with initial my bingo card and vice versa. And then when we were done, Adrian gave us this paper of the twenty-five words and their meanings. And we were not least correct on our bingo cards, so we didn't get bingo, but it was, it was a good, um, learning experience, and I think that all of us trustees and have some work to do, and maybe this could be some part of our professional development. It was very well, and he was very well received. It was just a beautiful conference, I could speak and speak and speak, but I won't do that because in the respect of our other trustees' time for this evening. Uh, but I would be more than glad to put something together of my day. It was just, it was great. And Superintendent LeFay, he sat in on a panel on, um, inclusive leadership with two other, um, people, and it was just, it was wonderful, and briefly, um, well, there's a thank you, she shared some experiences, um, of her, her life and others, when she was in the section with our two students. It was just a wonderful day, I have nothing but great things to say about it, and, uh, I actually learned to folk dance too, so. It's just a fun fact of the day, and, uh, thank you, keep them your team.
Okay, are there any other announcements to do with education, your schools, anything? Okay, I see none. We're now at trustee calendar again, so you'll notice it's big because we're at the beginning of the year. And the year present, it's been purple down. If there is anything that's missing on there, please let us know, and I see, trustee Morgan, go ahead, trustee Morgan.
Sorry, uh, just a quick, uh, thing, I was going through putting all the board meetings on my calendar today. And I noticed that January's, uh, board meeting was, the last one was the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of January, and I thought it should have been the twenty-first or twenty-second. If you could just help me with that.
You may recall, that was approved at board here, we did make a shift, um, based on, uh, yep, there's a CEO CFO conference that happened, so we did do the shed.
I remember now, thank you.
That's a good question, you know, because I, we never remembered either, Fran. Any other announcements? I see none. Okay, we're at very end. Hey, that's Bluewater District School Board adjourned at eight twenty-six PM to that mover. And we're turned, thank you very much, everybody, today you call. And Randy remains safe in your place.
Very good, that, I mean, thanks for that, great job. But she set the standard out for you guys, hey, like, that's like level four. Yeah, that was really good.
Thank you.